Call this meeting in order with a pledge of allegiance. Roll call.
Fernwald.
Here.
Fernwald, here. Hill.
Here.
Hill, here. Mack.
Here.
Mack, here. Carr.
Here.
Carr, here. Cantello Zilman.
Here.
Cantello Zilman, here. Slattery. Slattery absent. Clinker.
Here.
Clinker, here. Johnson. Johnson absent. Alexander.
Here.
Alexander, here. Bellato.
Here.
Bellato, here. Cosidas.
Here.
Cosidas, here. Rita. Rita absent. Donahue.
Here.
Donahue, here. Holly. Holly absent. Vargas.
Here.
Oh, yeah, Mayor Vargas is here too. Yeah, I'm going down the line to ten present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Now I need a motion to approve the city council minutes for the date of September the 24th, 2019, and the special meeting on September the 30th, 2019. Do we have a motion by Alderman Cantello Zilman and by Alderman Donahue? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mack.
Aye.
Mack, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zilman.
Aye.
Cantello Zilman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, here. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Cosidas.
Aye.
Cosidas, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Ten eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Now we open up for public comment.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. City Council members, good evening. My name is Kenny Anderson. I'm a staff representative with Assembly Council 31. I represent the police clerks who work for the front desk, work in the, with the parking tickets, and then as the records clerks, as well as the public works and water department employees who are under our collective bargaining agreement, some of which are here tonight. We've been negotiating for a successor contract since June, excuse me, July 19th, 2018, and our members have not had a wage increase since January of 2018, which is soon approaching two years. In our last negotiation session on September 9th, the city's bargaining team offered a wage increase but minus retroactive pay. And no increases for one of the members of our bargaining team, who just happens to be our union steward and a member of our bargaining team. We understand that the police and fire have settled their contracts with full retroactive pay, including retroactive pay for a retiree. Our folks make considerably less than police and fire and are no less in need of retroactive pay than those folks. We had asked why the residency stipend was not afforded to our members and were told. We didn't ask for it. While our group does not have the same size as police or fire union represented staff, it doesn't mean that we should be valued any less. Our members want a contract that provides for fair wages, fair wage increases, and respects the contributions that our members make on a daily basis. Beginning the first day of negotiations, we had asked for discussions with the police chief and the public works director to discuss and update our job descriptions. We've been denied any opportunity to engage in meaningful discussions about the changing job duties, which is incumbent on the employer's duty to bargain with the union. We're not asking for the keys to the city, nor are we asking to make managerial decisions, but we are asking to be recognized and respected for the role in making the city work. In closing, we ask that the city council and the mayor direct your bargaining team to reach a swift resolution of our contract struggle. On behalf of our members, I want to thank you for your time and be willing to meet with any of you to explain our position regarding bargaining. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, elected officials of Blue Island. My name is Pastor Brittany Coy. I'm the pastor at First Lutheran Church of Blue Island and St. Philip Lutheran Church. It is on the agenda, but I just wanted to say the interdenominational Christian service does, as of right now, have 13 congregations that are committed to come together and offer a public space for mourning the Metro South closure and how this whole debacle has gone down. The congregations include St. Benedict Roman Catholic Church, Grace United, Casa de Racion, which is House of Prayer, St. Peter and St. Paul Lutheran, Harvest Faith International, Blue Island, St. Philip Lutheran, Bethel Pentecostal, First Lutheran, and then in Midlothian, St. Stephen Lutheran, Good Shepherd Lutheran of Robbins, Robbins Ministerial Alliance, and then the Lighthouse Church of All Nations in Alset. So, I hope that it's a good discussion and we can have this public display.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Council members and Mayor. I'm Joseph Martin, 13201, South Ashland. I said face point. I'm here today to speak about saving lives. In particular, number one, I'd like to speak about a facility we have in our facility that's out to save our children. It's called Mark One Mentoring. If anyone haven't been down there, please go across the street from White Castle and look at this facility that this gentleman has run for five years on his own with no help to save our children in Blue Island. Their motto is they use old cars to save young lives. When they teach skills to help our children become productive citizens and give back to our city, it helps all of us. Please, if you have been out now, please go down there. So I'm here to speak on behalf of saving them in some way possible. That's saving, saving children, saving lives. The next thing I'll just mention, we need a hospital that saves lives. I don't even have to go any further. We go to the, we need a hospital. It saves lives. The third thing I'd like to really get to is about, most of them used to call pot. Now, most people call it cannabis. In our city and many other cities, they have cannabis facilities all over. And we all know you can go almost anywhere in any city and get pot, but we don't know what it is. And it's, some of it is killing people. So, in our city, if we can take control of the industry and know what our people are getting and get some tax revenue to help our city, I think it'd be good for our city. So that's, that's also helps save lives. So to me, if we can help save Mark One Mentors, save our children, do well we can to save our lives with a hospital, and take control of the pot that's on the street anyway. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I'm Nancy Thompson, and I'm a resident of the city. For eight years, I was not at this podium. I was in this stand as an alderman. And I want to thank those who supported me those eight years, because I wasn't here, Mayor, when you gave the plaques out to everyone. And I appreciate the support of all the people in the ward, the seventh ward, and then last the fifth ward. I have been watching by way of television what's going on in the city council, and I'm appalled at some of the things I've seen. I witnessed the committee's selection that you selected, Mayor, and it was turned down by the alderman here now. Now, I'm not pointing fingers at people, but once the election, I must say, and I will offer help to her, if she's having difficulty getting her minutes together, and that is Alderman Nancy Rita. She failed to give minutes when she was the chairman of municipal. She didn't give minutes. She's now chairman of the judiciary, and she's following the same suit. Now, when things are discussed in judiciary, it's brought to the full council, every committee that's here, they have a chairman, and their minutes are brought to the full council, with the exception of Alderman Nancy Rita. And I'd like to extend to her, if she needs help with her minutes, I'd be glad to help her. Because every chairman of every committee should give their minutes, not stand here or sit here and tell someone when their next meeting is going to be. Tell what happened in that previous meeting, because we all need to know. It's important. Secondly, I'm appalled at the idea of a person, Mr. Sergio Acosta, Acosta, who has been, I guess, assigned to open up the case of the famous Tahoe's. And with you, Mayor. Mayor, you know you and I have a long record, a running one, but it's one thing you know about Nancy Thompson, she can stand her ground. And I have supported you, gone against others for you, Mayor. And it's one thing if someone decides to spend $15,000 to track down the Tahoe mystery, when this city last year borrowed $500,000 from the Beverly Bank to tide them over until we got our tax dollars. Am I right, Director Marzo? Correct. We're on the brink of almost what? Bankruptcy? We're robbing Peter to pay Paul. But yet, this city council can find extra monies. We hired a new law firm. We can find extra monies to pay someone to investigate you. For what? I've got potholes in the fifth ward that needs to be filled. That $15,000 can be used to fill potholes 120th, 119th Place, and on Washington Tree. It's a waste of money. It's absurd. The new aldermen here who are totally unaware of what went on with the previous alderman. We were robbing Peter to pay Paul. Where did we get a windfall from? Where, anybody like that of aldermen who's here? May I, Alderman Bellato? Where did the extra money come from?
Scrimping and saving.
I must say, Alderman Bellato and Alderman Kevin Donahue, and the appropriations cut, cut, cut every department. They cut everything, but yet they can find $15,000 to give someone to investigate you? It's absurd. Use this money where it should be and stop the BS. I, Mr. Mur, Ms. Murphy stood before this council last week, and she talked about how she was so perturbed by what's going on in this council, this inward fighting, all this stuff, jockeying for positions and whatever. You need to cut it out. Stop it. Just stop it. Because I've been on the inside. I know what's going on. Anybody want to challenge Nancy Thompson, challenge me, because I got something for you. Just challenge me, because I know what's going on here. I know who take orders from whom. I know who's running this town or trying to run it. Instead of taking care of their job in Springfield, you can't run the city council in Springfield at the same time. So, cut it out. I want to thank Mike Alderman, Mike Mack, for the great job he's doing in the fifth ward. We say the government is run by the people and for the people. He is a guy that listens to the people, and he's doing it. I want to thank you, Mack, for the job you're doing, Alderman.
Thank you, Nancy.
You make me proud of you.
Thank you.
You make me proud. And I thank you for your patience for me today. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
My name is Carol DePace Green. An unprecedented amount of precious Blue Island City Council time, energy, Blue Island taxpayer money has been wasted on hidden agendas, projects, and diversions. It's high time the city council take a good, hard look and start following the evidence instead of engineering what appears to be more diversions and more no bid contracts. At the September 23 Finance Committee meeting, it was revealed the Finance Committee favored water sold to Posen at the rate of $5 per thousand gallons, which will generate no profit for the city of Blue Island. No alderman on the Finance Committee, Donahue, Clinker, Alexander, Johnson, or Bellato oppose the reduced cost at $5, at the $5 rate that Posen will be charged for water. It must be noted, Blue Island water consumers are paying $8.43 plus $1.69 per thousand gallons for sewer service. That's a total of $10.12. If we're trying to get money and make money, I do not want to see our city selling bonds or selling our souls for things we need. And if we're going to sell water, sell it at a profitable price. Don't rate Posen, but charge them a fair rate. Engineers that looked at the project recommended a price of $5.82 per thousand gallons for a projected amount of $1.2 million without accounting for any upgrades. Now, I'm told that the city of Blue Island is not paying for any of the engineering work and legal work for, to sell water to Posen. I don't believe it. I think we're going to need to FOIA request any bills coming to the city of Blue Island for engineering work and legal work, including any ordinances that need to be written, to sell water to Posen, because this is not believable. The Longwood, in the meantime, at tonight's municipal meeting, it was revealed that the city is going to seek an $8 million low interest loan to upgrade Blue Island's water system. Hasn't Jawa, Flint, Michigan, the city of Chicago taught you anything about the water systems? The people that we get here to come and do any work for us, the sloppy work that gets done, do you really want to put your drinking water in their hands? I would hope not. You didn't learn anything from losing millions on the Jawa? The Longwood resurface project, the rain gardens, rain barrels, are all starting to appear to be part of a very expensive and extension, extensive pyramid scheme and money distribution system. The permeable concrete material to resurface the street, absorb and divert water, was not used in that project the way it should have been. There's still a corrective action plan that Alderman Carr is going to start working on to try to get relief down there, and that's after three years. But she's putting together a corrective action plan, and I think she may be able to get something done, because I think she realizes how serious this issue is. In the meantime, at our September 30 Finance Committee meeting, it was determined the IT person requested updates for the servers for the city of Blue Island. The Finance Committee wanted to update the server, but delay the updating of the city computer systems and computers. Delay the updating of the city of Blue Island computer systems and computers. On February 10th, I sent out an information saying, "We need our city of Blue Island and elected officials to understand. Our city of Blue Island cybersecurity doors are open, and we need them closed. The privacy notice should be placed on the water bills, vehicle stickers, and building permits. The system granting access to, access to the city of Blue Island needs to be reviewed and safeguards put in place. Care and custody of the city of Blue Island seal and logo needs to be taken. Vendors must be properly vetted, all materials inspected before presented at the city council. The city of Blue Island should not grant third-party ownership, perpetual ownership of private data and use in our municipal contracts." That means, if somebody who's doing some billing work for us, they have access to people's personal information, name, address, phone number, how you pay your water bill. Nobody should have, be granted that kind of access like that. As you know, the Blue Island computer system has been hacked. Y'all know that, right? But I've only been saying for eight months, please, you're spending money on the wrong things. The priorities really are security, security, security. It appears as though all these hidden agendas, the axe grinding, knife sharpening, has gotten us to where we are today. Blue Island is in no position to start selling recreational marijuana. We don't have what we need for our first responders. We have a hospital that's currently closed. We don't have people paying attention to the essentials, safety and our computer system. Sergio, Sergio Acosta investigation into the Tahoe's would really be a giant waste of his precious time. The man is a very good attorney, and as I said at the last city council meeting, I can't think of any reason why he would take on a $150 million headache for $15,000. Yes, the Tahoe's were investigated, absolutely. And the people who did the investigation did not care where the bodies were buried, did not care who was responsible, wanted any and every public elected official who was responsible for any of that stuff to be held accountable. Do you know who a lot of these folks were? Half of the city council, they all voted to approve GPAS and get the city involved in GPAS. And in the process, forgot that it was approved in every committee. But it was. An agreement was executed and signed by the previous city attorney, but nobody seemed to remember what was done. In the meantime, yes, we all deserve to know what went on with those Tahoe's, but I wouldn't waste $15,000 on an investigation by Sergio Acosta or anyone else. You're going to need to wait for the FBI to come in and conduct their investigation. And hopefully, the FBI has been called to investigate the ransomware and what's going on with the Blue, city of Blue Island computer system now. So, you may be able to get some answers sooner rather than later. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
The other thing you could spend that $15,000 on might be the forensic audit that's long overdue.
Allen Stevo, good evening, Mayor, City Council.
Good evening, sir.
When will the city start acting to recoup its losses from the Jawa scam? When will the city start to act on the obstruction of justice lawsuit with Robbie Silva? Go after those who are responsible, not the taxpayers. Why should the taxpayers pay? Resolution number 209-033, appointing US Attorney, former US Attorney Sergio Acosta to investigate purchase of two Chevrolet vehicles in 2018. How much will this cost? Could, could someone tell me, please? How much will this cost?
Resolution out up to $15,000.
$15,000. Is there a line item in our budget for this? Was there a line item in the appropriation?
Yes.
No, then we don't, then we don't have the money to pay for it. We have the Cook County State's Attorney, the Illinois Attorney General, the FBI to investigate. Folks, we don't have the money to waste on Mr. Acosta. Is Mr. Acosta here tonight? This is another rendition from Kellyham Township. The township has a history of this sort of rendition. They hired Dick Devine, former Cook County State's Attorney, to research the murder, death of Carlos Elgodal. He used the Cook County State's Attorney's Office to cover this, this death up. The judge said, "How do you have a body and no one goes to jail?"
Anyone else? We move on to report of city officials, presentations, and resolutions. Do we have representatives from Delta Sigma Theta? Okay, would you mind stepping to the podium, please? Again, as the mayor of the city of Blue Island and all the elected officials here, I want to thank you and welcome you to the island, to Blue Island. So if you want to stand behind me, and we'll do it this way.
Thank you.
There we go. Let me set myself up here. I'm going to read it this way, even though I have my back to the camera, but you can go over here. It's a resolution, it's a proclamation regarding Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Inc., Midwest Region, Regional Day of Service, October 19th, 2019. It reads as follows. Whereas Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Inc., Delta's also known as Delta Sigma Theta, was founded on January 13, 1913, by 22 Covetian women at Howard University. And whereas since it's founded in 1913, Delta Sigma Theta has clearly distinguished itself as a public service organization that boldly confronts the challenges of all Americans. And whereas Delta Sigma Theta provides an extensive array of public service initiatives through its five-point problematic thrust of economic development, educational development, international awareness, and involvement, physical and mental health, and political awareness and involvement. And whereas the Joliet Area/South Suburban Alumni Chapter is one of over 100 chapters of Delta Sigma Theta in the Midwest Region, and whereas all of the Midwest Region chapters of Delta Sigma Theta will perform acts of kindness and service on the Regional Day of Service, and whereas over the years, Jazz Act, as it's known, has faithfully served the residents of Ridgeton Park, and Ridgeton Park will be one of the communities that Jazz Act will serve during its Regional Day of Service, and whereas most appropriate that we could recognize the accomplishments of Jazz Act. Now therefore, I, Domingo F. Vargas, Mayor of the city of Blue Island, in agreement with the council, do by hereby recognize October 19th, 2019, as Jazz Act Day, and further extend appreciation to La Chula Jackie Pope, President, for extraordinary leadership, and to all Jazz Act members for their exemplary dedication to the city of Blue Island and the entire South Suburban. And I will sign off on it. Again, congratulations to your chapter. If there's any one of you who wants to give a small speech, be my guest. It's your chance.
Good evening. It is my honor and pleasure that we will be in Blue Island on October 19th, delivering acts of kindness through Blue Island. We have partnered with Robbins next door to you, so we'll be between Robbins. In fact, this is my area. I'm Jackie Pope, and I am the president. And so, we have partnered with Muzora Jones, who is one of the co-captains for Blue Island, and we will be and we will be around the area. You may see a lot of red that day, red and white, as we deliver service. We will start about 10:00. We will be ending around 3:00 that day, so we'll be going between both of the areas to do acts of kindness. And it's our pleasure to be here. We did this a few years ago in Blue Island, and so we'll be coming back.
Welcome back. We have members of Christ Memorial United Church, if you mind stepping up. You're gonna be the representative today.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have another proclamation, and it reads as follows. Our proclamation to acknowledge the anniversary date of September 29th for Christ Memorial United Church. We did this already, but this is in front of all of you so that you would also get a chance to see this and hear this. Whereas the history of Blue Island's churches go back well into the 1900s, and whereas two such churches that were formed were St. Paul Evangelical Reformed Church and the Congregational Church, and whereas with vibrant congregations in these two churches, someone saw the need to act on the changing times of the mid-1900s. And whereas St. Paul Evangelical Reformed Church and the Congregational Church, active and thriving congregations, decided to form a union between them. And whereas their current theology was so similar, the new denomination of the 1950s seemed to be the road these families saw their lives going to become. And whereas in 1969, St. Paul Evangelical Reformed Church and the Congregational Church merged as one to become Christ Memorial United Church of Christ. Whereas they built a new building on the site of the Congregational Church while forging their united life at St. Paul Church. Later that year, the whole congregation made the Walk of Faith from St. Paul Church to their new home of Christ Memorial United Church, located now at 2440 York Street, Blue Island, Illinois. Whereas 50 years, and I repeat, 50 years, we celebrate the anniversary of this vision of our fathers before us. It is with hopes and prayers that another 50 years and more will be blessed on this church. Now therefore, I, Domingo F. Vargas, Mayor of the city of Blue Island, in agreement with the city council, do hereby proclaim September 29th as the anniversary date in marking its 50th year of Christ Memorial United Church going forward, and we'll sign off on it. So let's hear a big round of applause for them. The mic's yours. Okay. On both proclamations, we'll start with the Delta Sigma Theta proclamation. I need concurrence or motion?
Motion.
A motion to approve, motion by Alderman, Holly, second by Alderman Bellato, regarding Delta Sigma Theta proclamation. We'll go in separate. Roll call, please.
Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantellos Zelman.
Aye.
Cantellos Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Cosidas.
Aye.
Cosidas, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. 12 ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you. I've appointed Michael Cindy to the zoning board of appeals. I need a motion for concurrence to agree to be on the board by Alderman, Donahue, second by Alderman, Rita. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantellos Zelman.
Aye.
Cantellos Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Cosidas.
Aye.
Cosidas, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. 12 ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Next, we need to set Halloween hours again for October 31st, and the suggestion's from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. I need a motion regarding that. Motion by Alderman Hill, second by Alderman Holly. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantellos Zelman.
Aye.
Cantellos Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Cosidas.
Aye.
Cosidas, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. 12 ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Next, Mayor's announcements. So if people who weren't here last time, just as a reminder, it could be starting this winter, for sure this spring, the Western Avenue Bridge renovation will be starting. Again, as you know, the Alderman Ward, 135th Street, is being worked on right now from Western Avenue going east. Vermont Street is the next project, will be hopefully before winter starts. That will be finished 119th. For the Aldermen who don't know, and former Alderman Nancy Thompson, we were able to secure, we will probably get an official announcer from the county, the necessary money to demolish the remaining buildings at 119th and Vincennes. So a total will be almost $400,000 to demolish that and then go forward, hopefully for investment and building and on that location, the frontage. So again, congratulations, hard work from that, from the former Alderman to the present Alderman there. It's a big improvement that this year for Blue Island on that corner. So congratulations to everyone for that, for that. We reached out, we received a letter from our state representative, Bob Rita, this morning. We reached out to him that we would be more than happy to continue working together regarding the Metro South facility location. As everybody knows, the proposal's still on the table. We want to move forward. There is a date, and time is running out. October 22nd, it goes before, back to the board, and hopefully, again, it's up to the council to decide which way they want to go, but the proposal from [inaudible] is still on the table. City Clerk?
Yes, one item. Your evening, Your Honor. I need a motion to approve interdominational Christian service to mourn the closure of Metro South on Monday, October 28th, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. at York Street between Western Avenue and Gregory Street. Setup would be begin at 5:00 p.m.
Need a motion by Alderman Clinker, second by Alderman Mac. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantellos Zelman.
Aye.
Cantellos Zelman, clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Cosidas.
Aye.
Cosidas, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. 12 ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any bids?
I have one bid, Your Honor. We have the Chicago Meteor Vault Improvement Award recommendation for Gas Gill and Walton Construction Company in the amount of $334,000, $334,050.
Is there a motion to recommend by Alderman Bellato? Do we have a second? Alderman Carr? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantellos Zelman.
Aye.
Cantellos Zelman, aye, I'm sorry. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Cosidas.
Aye.
Cosidas, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. 12 ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any bids?
I have one bid, Your Honor. We have the Chicago Meteor Vault Improvement Award recommendation for Gas Gill and Walton Construction Company in the amount of $334,000, $334,050.
Is there a motion to recommend by Alderman Bellato? Do we have a second? Alderman Carr? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantellos Zelman.
Aye.
Cantellos Zelman, clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Cosidas.
Aye.
Cosidas, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. 12 ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any bids?
I have one bid, Your Honor. We have the Chicago Meteor Vault Improvement Award recommendation for Gas Gill and Walton Construction Company in the amount of $334,000, $334,050.
Is there a motion to recommend by Alderman Bellato? Do we have a second? Alderman Carr? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantellos Zelman.
Aye.
Cantellos Zelman, clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Cosidas.
Aye.
Cosidas, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. 12 ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any bids?
I have one bid, Your Honor. We have the Chicago Meteor Vault Improvement Award recommendation for Gas Gill and Walton Construction Company in the amount of $334,000, $334,050.
Is there a motion to recommend by Alderman Bellato? Do we have a second? Alderman Carr? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantellos Zelman.
Aye.
Cantellos Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Cosidas.
Aye.
Cosidas, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. 12 ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
That's it.
City Treasurer?
Thank you, Your Honor. I apologize, I could not, for unforeseen reasons that beyond the control, I could not have my stuff ready. The treasurer's report to transfer by next council meeting, everything will be up to date hopefully also. Whatever Alderman's been asking for is the expenditure revenue. Hopefully that'll be close and possibly as best we can. Also want to inform the council that next, council meeting of 22nd, I've invited Foster and Foster for the actuarial report to come and give the council a report on the fired police pension as required every annual. Also I've invited the library director to come and do her presentation also on the 22nd, and that will be open to the council. If there's any questions that want to, ahead of time, but the actuarial report will be electronically sent to you all, and then I'll also have some hard copies if you need them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. City Attorney? Nothing? Committee reports, committee, development committee?
Thank you, Mayor. We're meeting, next meeting's tomorrow at 7:00 p.m. I gave my report at the last city council meeting, however, we got the, back the draft for the permit fee reduction for insulation through ComEd, Chicagoland Vintage Home Association Energy Program. They basically just wanted a one paragraph from our building department saying that we're going to waive building department fees, however, they still would need to come in and file a permit. So in your packet, it was submitted to you under permit fee reduction for ComEd Chicagoland Vintage Home Association Energy Program. That's what we talked about extensively in the committee over several months. Basically, if you fall within income level, which is pretty much the entire city of Blue Island, you can get free insulation put into your home through this program. So please take advantage of it. Most of the towns around us already do it, O'Forrest, Al, Seposan, and it's something that we wanted to offer in Blue Island also. And they already passed community development and passed through the building department, and now we just need to pass it through city council, and it should be open, and this was reviewed by both Brian and Howard out of the building department. So I need a motion.
Motion, got a motion made a second by Alderman Hill. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye.
for all the items listed minus the invoice for Montana Welch for the $2,184 and the change.
Motion by Alderman, now. Donahue's second, by Alderman Hill. Any questions? Roll call.
Farrenwald?
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Hill?
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac?
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr?
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zelman?
Aye.
Cantello Zelman, aye. Clinker?
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander?
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato?
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus?
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Rita?
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue?
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly?
Aye.
Holly, aye. Twelve ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
Before, Alderman, since email's down, is it okay if you don't get that until we're back up or anything? Because I do have copies of it, I just can't...
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, thank you. Next, the committee heard a proposal from Paradigm, which is the city's computer IT contracting service. The committee agreed that work on the server should start immediately and asked city staff to go through the number of computers that are needed and to cut where appropriate. There's a motion by Alderman Clinker to approve the purchase of new servers at a cost of $16,350, and a second by Alderman Bellato. Voice vote was taken, the matter was approved unanimously. This is item five on our city council agenda, so I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Make a motion, do a second. Alderman, Rita, any questions? Roll call, please.
Farrenwald?
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Hill?
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac?
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr?
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zelman?
Aye.
Cantello Zelman, aye. Clinker?
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander?
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato?
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus?
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Rita?
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue?
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly?
Aye.
Holly, aye. Twelve ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The city then heard a proposal presented by the city clerk regarding the renewal of the city health care plan. And Lion Employee Benefits prepared two quotes for the city. The first was a renewal with Blue Cross, Blue Shield, that had a 7% increase from last year. The second proposal was from United Healthcare and would have a 24% increase. The committee agreed to stay with Blue Cross, Blue Shield. There's a motion by Alderman Alexander, second by Alderman Bellato, to approve. I believe the city's going to continue receiving the same health care it did. There is a representative from Lion Mezro to answer any further questions, if anyone had anything in detail.
Are there any questions, or, you know what? If you want to...
Sure, thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Again, this is Steve Duran, and I'm representing Alliant Insurance Services, formerly Mezro Financial. I've been helping the city for the last several years in cost containment measures. So for the, give you a little bit of feedback. Since 2016 through 2019, the average increase has been 1.65. So that represents a total allocation of about $44,465 for the last four years. Now, last year, we do know that there were some plan design changes. This year, for the upcoming 2020, the increase, as discussed, is 7.16%. There is one slight modification that we cannot control, which is an IRS mandate on the high deductible HSA plan design. That deductible for an individual's going up to 2,800 from current 2019 years of 2,700, pardon me. And that is just a contractual change within the IRS limits for the high deductible HSA compatible plan. So again, the recommendation, we did receive alternative bids, but United Healthcare came in significantly higher. So again, that is our recommendation for this year. We constantly look at alternatives, not only within Blue Cross, but with whatever companies out there to solicit alternative bids. But just to give you guys a little bit of history as to who I am and what we've been able to accomplish for the last four years. So I'm open to any questions that you may have.
No questions?
Great, well, thank you very much.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, it's a motion to approve item number three, resolution number 2019-034.
There's a motion, is there a second? By Alderman Hill, any questions? Roll call.
Farrenwald?
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Hill?
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac?
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr?
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zelman?
Aye.
Cantello Zelman, aye. Clinker?
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander?
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato?
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus?
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Rita?
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue?
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly?
Aye.
Holly, aye. Twelve ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Finally, the city treasurer gave a presentation on a consulting advisory services proposal by John Kispere Company to assist in completion of continuing disclosures related to the bonds. This is an item that must be completed for the autumn audit. The fee for the work will not exceed $2,000. There's a motion to approve by Alderman Bellato and a second by Alderman Clinker. Voice vote was taken, and the motion was approved unanimously. This is item number four on our agenda, and I'd like to make a motion to approve.
So motion, is there a second? By Alderman, Rita, any questions? Roll call, please.
Farrenwald?
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Hill?
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac?
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr?
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zelman?
Aye.
Cantello Zelman, aye. Clinker?
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander?
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato?
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus?
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Rita?
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue?
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly?
Aye.
Holly, aye. Twelve ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
All right, the last part of my minutes. Our next meeting will be held October 16th in the East Annex. Reason for the meeting is being moved is due to the Columbus Day holiday. There's a motion to adjourn by Alderman Clinker and a second made by Alderman Alexander. Motion was approved unanimously, and the meeting was adjourned at 6:59. And the last item I have is resolution number 2019-033. It's a resolution, city of Blue Island, appointing former Assistant U.S. Attorney Sergio Acosta as legislative counsel solely for the purpose of conducting an independent investigation into the purchase of two Chevrolet Tahoe motor vehicles in 2018, and advising the council on the legality of the circumstances surrounding the purchase pursuant to section 30.06 of the city of Blue Island Code of Ordinances. So I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion, is there a second? By Alderman, Rita, any questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that this be tabled, and not need a second on that.
Second. Second by Alderman, Holly.
And I'd like to say, in all seriousness, this is not frivolous, and I would ask you to please hear me out. We're going through an awful lot right now with the hospital and a number of other issues.
There's no debate on motions to table.
Let him speak.
It's procedural, there's no motions, it's a motion to table. If it fails, he can speak.
Go ahead.
The chair can allow the alderman to speak if the chair chooses to do so.
So I feel that we really need to be working together with one voice right now. And this is a very contentious issue, we've heard it from the audience tonight. I think it's no secret that I oppose this. I'm not going to go through all the reasons. But I just would rather that we move this to a later date, when there are not so many kind of fires burning in the city as there are right now. This is a pretty minor issue. So I'd like to just ask that you all consider that.
Thank you. So is there a motion, is there a second?
To table.
To table, roll call.
Farrenwald?
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Hill?
Um, let me think about that one. I think I would like to abstain.
Abstain?
Abstain. Mac?
No.
Mac, no. Carr?
No.
Carr, no. Cantello Zelman?
No.
Cantello Zelman, no. Clinker?
No.
Clinker, no. Alexander?
No.
Alexander, no. Bellato?
No.
Bellato, no. Casadus?
No.
Casadus, no. Rita?
No.
Rita, no. Donahue?
No.
Donahue, no. Holly?
Aye.
Holly, aye. Two ayes, one abstention, and nine nos.
Can all also vote on this one?
No.
I'd like to make my resolution, our motion to approve.
I'd like, I'd like to then introduce an amendment to this motion, and I'd like to pass it out to everybody so they got a chance to see it. And I'll read the proposed amendment to this resolution. And my amendment is, my proposed amendment is that the city attorney shall appoint a qualified investigative firm and/or law firm to investigate whether the defendants in the lawsuit filed by Ismail Harrow for, quote, "intentional interference with prospective economic advantage," count one, "for intentional infliction of emotional distress," count two, "and for violations of the Illinois Whistleblower Act," count three, "should be, one, held liable for the cost of the settlement agreement to be paid by the city of Blue Island; two, held liable for the costs of the legal defense of said lawsuit by the city of Blue Island; and, three, made to pay any and all, by any and all available legal means, all the costs incurred with reference to points one and two above. In light of the fact that the cost to the city for the above referenced matters will total in excess of $2 million. The initial phase of the investigation will be limited to $15,000, and report is to be provided to the city council at that time summarizing any findings and recommendations the investigator deems relevant."
There's a motion, is there a second, Alderman, Tom, Holly?
I'd like to note that this matter potentially will cost, well, not potentially, is going to cost the city more than $2 million. So I don't, you might view this as frivolous. If you do, then you shouldn't vote for the Tahoe investigation. Absolutely not. If you think that the Tahoe investigation is important, then you sure should vote for this. The two can't go without the other.
Roll call, please.
What's, what is the vote on the amended?
The roll call is to vote to approve the amendment. We're voting to approve the amendment.
To approve the amendment. Farrenwald?
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Hill?
No.
Hill, no. Mac?
Yes.
Mac, aye. Carr?
No.
Carr, no. Cantello Zelman?
No.
Cantello Zelman, no. Clinker?
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander?
No.
Alexander, no. Bellato?
No.
Bellato, no. Casadus?
No.
Casadus, no. Rita?
No.
Rita, no. Donahue?
No.
Donahue, no. Holly?
Aye.
Holly, aye. Four ayes, and eight nos, Your Honor.
Cannot vote aye, also.
If the amendment fails, the resolution is now before the city council for consideration. If I may just briefly address it, Mayor. I will not try to expound the eloquent presentation made by Mrs. Thompson in her comments to you, but I will tell you, it's my opinion that this resolution and the appointment of what you have referred to in the resolution as legislative counsel is inappropriate. It is an inappropriate subject for legislative counsel, and also a considerable waste of the city's treasury. I'll keep my comments to that, since, as I said, Mrs. Thompson was most eloquent in her expression of opposition to this particular resolution.
So there's a motion, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I also want to say that this is really, he's not going to have any kind of subpoena power at all. He's not going to really be able to get to any information that the Attorney General's office and the FBI have already done, the Secretary of State. There, there's a process, an investigation that's already ongoing. I know it's going to take a while to get to the bottom of it and hear back from the IRS, or from the IRS. I hear from the IRS all the time. From the FBI and from the, and the Attorney General's office. I do think that the $15,000 limit is not really going to get us very much, if anything. I don't think it's really worth the time or the money to spend on it, and it's certainly more than the price of a post-suit stamp.
Thank you very much. Roll call, go ahead.
Just want to add one item that, that, I respect what Alderman Holly said, but this is to go further than that. This is going to help us prevent this from happening again. It's going to give us a report on what practices we need to take to stop these unauthorized purchases from happening again. It could help us in drafting legislation, update the city purchasing policies, procedures. So I will be supporting this, and I ask my fellow members of city council to also vote aye. Thank you, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I would like to actually agree with Alderman that adopting procedures, I think, is an excellent idea. I think it'd be fairly easy to determine what we need to do without an investigation, frankly, so I'm voting against it.
What did they cost the citizens? What money did they cost the citizens? Whose money was used to buy the Tahos? Not one citizen's money. I was on the finance committee.
So, so there's a motion, a second, what do we?
Motion, roll call.
Motion, a second, to approve the original resolution. Farrenwald?
No.
Farrenwald, no. Hill?
Yes.
Hill, aye. Mac?
Yes.
Mac, aye. Carr?
Yes.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zelman?
Yes.
Cantello?
Yes.
I'm sorry, you're real quiet tonight, Ray. Cantello Zelman, aye. Clinker?
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander?
Yes.
Alexander, aye. Bellato?
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus?
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Rita?
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue?
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly?
No.
Holly, no. Two ayes and 10 nos, Your Honor.
Cannot vote aye.
Two ayes, okay.
Thank you. Next?
That's all I have, thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Public Health and Safety Committee?
Public Health and Safety, the next meeting is next Tuesday, the 15th, at 6:00 PM here. I contacted Alderman Slater, and I'm in the process of getting the agenda together based on what the two chiefs emailed us. So we'll have the meeting next Tuesday, back there at 6:00 PM.
Let me ask you, you contacted her?
I texted her and just asked if she wanted me to do the agenda, and she said yes.
Okay, is she still in Blue Island?
I have no idea. That's the only contact I've had.
I think we need to check on that. Municipal Services Committee?
No report, Your Honor. We had a meeting tonight. Our next meeting will be November the 12th.
Thank you very much. Judiciary Committee?
There's no report, since our September meeting was canceled. It was agreed due to the Metro South hearing, and our October meeting will be October 15th at 7:00 PM here in East Annex.
All right. Alderman, announcements or comments? I think we need to, we need a motion to adjourn. To discuss?
It's on, on the agenda.
Discussion of?
Well, let me state it for the record. Discussion of pending litigation to acquisition of real property and councilwoman.
I'd like to invite legislative counsel into executive session.
Pardon?
I would like to invite our legislative counsel into executive session.
There's no reason for a legislative counsel to be in the executive session. There's nothing to be discussed with respect to the business of legislative counsel. The things that we discuss are privileged and are kept privileged as long as the persons involved in the executive session are part of the allowed persons to protect that privilege. There's no reason at this point in time for legislative council to come in. We have counsel from Benish here to advise you with respect to the acquisition of real property, which involves the subject matter of Metro South. I'm here to give you just a brief update on pending litigation, and the discussion of employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of certain employees will be discussed with the lead from the mayor, and I'm here to advise you on that.
Great, thank you, but I'd still like our legislative counsel for the first item with the advisory of the hospital.
I, too, would like our legislative counsel present in executive session.
Well, I'll invite anybody wanting. We can invite our neighbor in the executive session if we'd like to, so we're going to invite him in.
I want to come, too!
Or we can, or we can discuss it in public session. Let's discuss the whole thing in public session.
Mr. Orban, I have attorney general with them also. Anything that's said is not confidential. Again, it is, it is during executive session. The very fact that asking for direction and advice from you pays to the legislative function is if you feel it's appropriate, the legislative council can't do that.
Well, if Alderman Bellato was correct, then I would like to invite everybody into executive session.
We just make a motion, everything's in public session. You want me to? Other than... I'm in favor, with public session.
Yeah, public session, do it, right over here.
Okay, go ahead, let's go. Attorney?
Nice.
I will report on item number one, the discussion of pending litigation. That is, the duty was to be the discussion of the lawsuit Harrow versus the city of Blue Island, to hope so presenting the final settlement to you. Unfortunately, that matter has not been included. We're still working on the resolution of that particular matter. For the public's information, the proposed settlement is $1,300,000 that will be paid for the rebound issue. There is also a portion of the agreement which deals with retaining Mr. Harrow as the city's payroll through October of next year. At this point, those are the only details I think are appropriate to release publicly since those matters have already been discussed.
Go ahead, Al.
I, it does relate to what we discussed earlier tonight. And I'd like to make sure that everyone's aware that in addition to the $1.3 million that we're talking about, there have been something on the order of a million dollars in legal fees associated with this matter, is that roughly correct?
Yes, those were incurred to do.
Yeah.
Not by our firm.
I understand, though, but that, yes, thank you.
I want it understood.
Yes, no, it's good. Now, you should have it understood. But, uh, so this matter has cost the city 2.3 million dollars and counting. Uh, City Council earlier decided not to vote to investigate that. Uh, if, I would, again, urge everyone here, read the lawsuit. I have it available. It is a shocking, an eye-opening document. Shocking and eye-opening. My jaw dropped open when I read this thing. You will be furious about what happened, and what we have to pay, and on whose behalf we have to pay, to settle this damn thing.
Thank you, Alderman.
The second item is acquisition of real property. I'm sorry?
Your microphone is not on.
Oh, I'm sorry. The second item is acquisition of real property. It deals with the subject matter of Metro South and the proposal that was presented and accepted by the mayor and subject to approval of the City Council. We invited Special Counsel Juan Morado here to bring the City Council up to speed and answer any questions they may have with respect to the status of the proceedings involving the owners of Metro South Forum and the litigation that's, or, excuse me, the hearing that's pending to be determined. Uh, I believe it's on October the twenty-second. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And Juan Morado is here, and he's certainly here to answer whatever questions you may have or to bring you up to speed.
Counsel, if you don't mind, bring the mic up a little bit and speak into it. All right.
How's that? Perfect, okay. So, uh, just by way of background, my name's Juan Morado Jr. I'm an attorney at Benish. Part of the reason you hired me is I'm formerly the General Counsel for the Health Facilities and Services Review Board, where the application is currently pending to discontinue Metro South Hospital. As it stands right now, the application with, uh, that's been filed is called a certificate of exemption. Under the Board's current rules, a certificate of exemption has to be approved by the Board if it has been deemed complete. In order to deem a certificate of exemption application complete, you only need to submit what's considered the key terms of the transaction. In this case, the discontinuation of the facility doesn't have many key terms besides we're closing down the facility, we're wrapping up operations. Other types of transactions that would fall under a certificate of exemption, and I'm explaining this because it might be important to what, what you would like to do with the facility, would be a change of ownership. So if you have another entity, a health system, or another hospital, or private person, anyone, who wants to come in and purchase Metro South Hospital, they would be going through what's called a change of ownership process. And the change of ownership process would require the filing of a certificate of exemption. That would, again, on the change of ownership, would require the key terms. Those key terms would be which entity is gonna be taking over? Do they have the wherewithal to take over? Do they have the financial ability to take over, and how much is the transaction going to cost? So at this point, the posture of it, at the last Board meeting on September seventeenth, the application was deferred. All that really means is that it was moved until the October twenty-second date. As you may have read in the news, the hospital is effectively closed. It is not in operation. And there was mention of a, um, a letter that was received from Representative Rita outlining a couple of different points. And there was some, and I must admit, that the certificate of need process, the biggest mistake people make is trying to read the statute and read the regulations for what they are. It is very nuanced. There's a whole, there's a lot in it that can basically change depending upon the interpretation of the Board staff. But I bring up the Representative Rita letter because there were a few things in there that I think, um, need some further clarification. Namely, there is this idea that a certificate of need is something that the hospital has. A certificate of need is kinda like a building permit. You get a building permit, you construct your building, and then after that, you get your certi- your certificate, ah, certificate of occupancy. So you can reside in there. You don't need the permit anymore. That's what a certificate of need is. You go in before the Health Facilities and Services Review Board, and you apply for it. Once you obtain it, it sets out a certain timeframe by which you can construct your hospital, and it sets out the cost by which you're supposed to stay with them. Once you're complete, once you complete that process, it's gone. What's most, what, what a hospital needs to operate is a license. A license is issued by the Illinois Department of Public Health. So the Health Facilities and Services Review Board is a, consider a separate entity outside of the Illinois Department of Public Health. Right now, Metro South Hospital has a hospital license. They don't have a operating hospital, and the application that they filed for a certificate of exemption just gives them the ability to turn in that license to the Illinois Department of Public Health and not be fined. Because they've already shut down operations at this point, what they would have had to have done, just like they did with the cardiac category of service that they shut down weeks ago, is they have to provide notice to both the Illinois Department of Public Health and the Health Facilities Board, letting them know, we're shutting, that we're temporarily shutting down service for, and in their case, I believe they said, lag of staff. So once that happens, then they have to report every month and say, hey, this temporary, this, this service is closed down. Now that they've shut down the hospital, they've effectively done the same thing, I would imagine. I haven't reached out to the Illinois Department of Public Health, but if they don't wanna start incurring massive fines, then they would go ahead and give them that notice. I don't know if there's any questions at this point, before I keep on talking. Anyone? Okay. So, the certificate of exemption has been filed. We undertook a series of communications with Quorum Health, who owns Metro South at this time. They proposed a deal that the mayor signed, subject to your approval, that we've all kind of seen and heard about to this point. They did a number of different things. It would offer the city a transition fee of two million dollars. It would give the city the opportunity to obtain title to specific parcels of property, or refuse title if they wanted to. It would give the city an additional six months to see if they could find someone who would want to come in and purchase or operate the hospital. After that six-month period, an additional three million dollars would be kicked in to maintain the, um, the building. They offered all of the medical equipment that is currently inside the hospital. That's value can be anywhere on the low end to five million dollars, to the high end, ten million dollars. They would give you title to all of that property. The truth is, the city is probably not in a position to operate a hospital. What this deal did was give you the ability to have some breathing room to determine the destiny of not only that facility, but the property around it. There were a number of different thing, options on the table. You could possibly get what's called a freestanding emergency room, whereby another health system would come in and set up an emergency room. I will caveat that with, it would require legislation to be passed by the Illinois General Assembly. But as I understand, you have folks who are very interested in the future of the facility. I'm sure they'd be happy to sponsor that legislation and go ahead and push it through. But a freestanding emergency room would give, it's just another option for what can be in that facility. There's the option for outpatient care. There's the option for somebody to come in and just continue running an acute care hospital. There's been this discussion about what would happen, uh, part of the, excuse me, take a step back. Part of the, um, the deal that was reached was Quorum would go to the Illinois Department of Public Health, and they would go to the Health Facilities and Services Review Board and seek a temporary suspension of their license. That's kinda what we just talked about right now. Part of the reason for a temporary suspension and the benefit of it is if, in the next six months, you're able to secure somebody who wants to do one of the different options we talked about, then they can do a change of ownership through the certificate of exemption process. And as we kinda talked about already, the certificate of exemption process, it's a little bit more streamlined. The Board has less discretion to not approve a certificate of exemption. And so essentially, once the terms have been submitted, it would go through. So there's been some, uh, conversation about, well, if they don't get approved for the temporary suspension, what happens then? And the truth is, a temporary suspension is not guaranteed. The Health Facilities Board could say, no, we're not gonna call this a temporary suspension. IDPH could say, no, we're not gonna call this a temporary suspension. And then the hospital would just continue to be closed. So in the event that does happen, a new, uh, potential owner would come in and wanna operate an acute care hospital, or a freestanding emergency room, would have to apply for a certificate of need. That building permit that we talked about in the front end of the process. And folks have said, well, it's gonna be nearly impossible to get a certificate of need approved. I think that, and this is my opinion as someone who has been a part of this Board for the last decade or so. My opinion, just seeing what happened at the September seventeenth meeting, is that this Board has no appetite. Nobody has an appetite to close a hospital. But they are obligated by the statutes and by the timing of which this application was filed to approve its closure. If given the opportunity to make a new hospital possible under a new certificate of need exemption, my guess is they would approve it. If I had personally had a client that came to me and said, well, I think they're not gonna say yes to the temporary suspension. Do you think we should still go for it? I would tell them a thousand times yes, because I know this Board has an appetite for wanting to approve a project in the community. All of that is dependent upon whether or not somebody is willing to come in and operate the facility. Let me tell you what happens if we don't move forward with the, the deal that was negotiated. It's not to say that it can't be fine-tuned or changed however this counsel would like. But let's say we don't do anything further. We shut down talks altogether and get nothing from Quorum. Then the hospital continues to be closed. They turn in their license to IDPH. They own the land, and they would still be paying taxes, which is a good thing, right? So the city would get some revenue there. But they, um, essentially would control the destiny of the land. They can sell it to whoever they want, or not. And it's up for, I guess, the, the highest bid at that point. And the city, other than your zoning powers, I imagine, there's not much more, uh, control that you would have over that land. That's, that's essentially what would happen without moving forward with some kind of, uh, getting something from the city. Uh, the other thing that I wanted to mention was, there was discussions about, um, some of the benefits that, uh, Metro South had realized over the last several years as a result of this, uh, this government working with them, trying to keep them here in town. And that was certainly something that was used to come to that transition fee. So I think it's important that you all know that as well. It wasn't just pick a number out of the sky. It was something that was actually based in what this town had given in consideration to keep them operating here. And so, uh, Mr. Herbert, I'm not sure if there's anything else, or questions, or you think, anything I need to touch on. I'd be happy to.
No, I appreciate it, but you and Mr. Silverman participated in the negotiations with the ownership of Quorum along with myself and Kelly Burke. Is that right?
That is correct.
And we were advising one another and discussing the terms throughout the weekend of the fifteenth, or fourteenth and fifteenth and sixteenth of September in an attempt to come to the terms which are expressed in the agreement that we reached, subject to the approval of the City Council, right?
It was a very long work week. Yes, indeed, including the weekend.
If, if you had to recommend the deal, would you recommend the, the deal that was negotiated to this City Council?
I would. I think it offers you a number of benefits. You know, this idea that if the hospital closes, you wanna be able to maintain some of the tax revenue that comes from it. The deal gives you that option. It allows you the ability to say, you know what? We're gonna take this parcel, this parcel, and this one, but we're gonna leave that other piece alone. Or it allows you to take it all. It allows you to take none of it, if that's what your desire is. What it also does for you, that nothing else has happened to this point, was you get the transition fee. You get the ability to have, uh, title to the equipment, the medical equipment that I talked about, which is very valuable. And you get the ability of, uh, having an additional three million dollars if you wanna continue searching for someone to come in and operate the facility. I think, if, if I'm correct, going into our discussions with Quorum, the city was not getting anything, except to close hospital, which is where we're at right now. And then you would get the ability to get tax revenue down the line. I'd like to make sure that I understand something here, because there seems to be some confusion about it. Initially, there's a, the, the initial part of the agreement is kind of a six-month agreement. That would be that we would agree that they could close the hospital officially. I guess you would say, oh, that's already closed. And in turn for that, they would grant us this two million dollar, uh, transfer fee, or whatever you wanna call it. Uh, and, and there would be a six-month period that we would have to see what happens. And more time, and maybe if necessary, hire a consultant or whatever to start to, you know, try to find and search out other facilities that might come in, or, you know, make other determinations about what, what we want to do six months from now. But we wouldn't be committed to anything else for that six-month period of time. After that six months is over, then we would have to, then we would have other decisions to make about whether we want to acquire the property, or we don't. That's right. And that's correct. So, we have kind of a, it just buys us six months. And I'd like to also add, I neglected to mention this. Part of that deal was that the, um, Quorum Corporation would pay, uh, it was either twenty-five or thirty-five thousand dollars for the consultants of your choosing to begin marketing the property.
There, there was also one component which was not mentioned, and that was that the contractual undertaking by the city to reimburse Quorum for the half a million, five hundred, and I believe it's eighty-six thousand dollars they're owed pursuant to the redevelopment agreement would be waived, and the city would also keep those funds. And so the total dollars involved in terms of cash at the beginning were approximately two and a half million dollars, almost 2.6 million dollars. And I think it's important, and by way of comparison only, for the City Council, when St. James Hospital was closed in Chicago Heights, that was Franciscan Health that closed that hospital, they gave a million and a half dollars to five communities. Creed, Fort Heights, Gl- total, to be divided amongst five communities. Creed, Fort Heights, Glenwood, Sauk Village, and South Chicago. So when we negotiated the deal, we tried, as I've told you already, and I'm telling you now publicly, to obtain as much on the front end as we could to accomplish what you told us you wanted us to accomplish, and that was to get back some of the incentive that we had paid in the past. We accomplished flexibility with respect to ownership of the real estate if we wanted to own it. We bought time and cooperation with Quorum and an opportunity to control what would actually happen to that big building if no one wants to come in and operate an acute care facility. We've also explored, as Mr. Morado has indicated, the fact that there is an ability for legislation to be passed which might open up options for a smaller type of facility to be run out of there. But we, as a community, would be driving that instead of waiting for it to possibly happen, and we would have control. So we looked at all of those things, and this was not, and I wanna just dispel this completely, because you were all kept apprised by counsel, by myself, and by Mrs. Burke of what we were trying to accomplish and how we were gonna accomplish it. This was not a back-room deal. The only back-room was when we went into that room to discuss what we wanted to try and get out of this mess. And I want that clearly understood. We didn't just pick up the phone and say to Quorum, hey, cut us the best deal you can. And I think Mr. Morado has explained to you that the benefits far outweigh the detriment if you don't seriously consider moving forward.
Wait a minute.
If anybody has any questions, Mr. Morado, you're certainly free to ask them.
City Treasurer?
You mentioned, you mentioned this process that they're offering to, to the city. Okay. It is on. Hello? Okay, but this, this proposal is to facilitate or transfer the building within a superior time, either immediately or within six months, to the city, right?
No.
So, okay, no. Okay, so, so in other words, if they, if they continue on this path, no matter what happens, okay, they close it down, they have an eight B tax reduction, okay? The eight B is from property value of approximately 3.5. It could have even gone up to four million dollars, uh, the property tax that they would initially have to pay if we took the eight B out of there. Okay, right now, they're, they're paying out a 1.3. Okay, out of that 1.3, we get X amount of dollars to the TIF. Okay, that we get so much money, and they get reimbursed again so much money. So, next month, we could very easily say, take the eight B out. So it goes up to four million dollars. We're gonna get two million dollars tax revenue for the school districts, for the City of Blue Island, for everybody, taxpayers, plus the TIF gets money. So if you take all those numbers, I think financially-wise, I want the hospital, you know, whatever the best way for the hospital to be facilitated or reopened again, I'm all for it. I'm, I'm against big corporation playing with the books and accounting to make it their best interest. They're gonna make 64 million dollars by shutting that million, that place down. Wasn't that approximate what they said?
I'm not sure.
Sixty-four million dollars, what I read and was given to me, that information. If they shut down that by the end of the quarter, or now, now they're, they're upset, and that's why they shut it up faster. They're, they're to gain 64 million dollars to give us two million dollars or three million dollars to, to, uh, what, how's the saying say, to give us the peak of the appetite, okay, to lure us? I've read, I personally, if you take the accounting, what they have to pay for taxes at a four million dollar minimal reassessment, taking the eight B, what the community has to gain in, in three, four years, because they're gonna have to pay taxes, okay?
Can I interrupt you just briefly? You have a redevelopment agreement with the owners of the hospital.
Right.
The redevelopment agreement says that we get, as a city, the first 757,000 dollars of taxes. And they get the rest. That's a legally binding document. Now, I know what you're saying. I understand your logic. But in order to avoid that agreement, they either have to concur, all right? They, it's legally binding between the city and...
Hospital.
The hospital. We can't just say the deal is over because they have the right then to claim this is a contract, which is what it is, all right? You owe us everything over 750,000. So in, in the idea of, we'll go to the county and ask them to remove the six B as an incentive which reduces the taxes, that first of all, that's not been tried at this point in time, and while the county may be... And while the county may be complacent and compliant in that request, that doesn't mean the hospital ownership will just go along with it. And it doesn't mean the hospital ownership will not seek to enforce the redevelopment agreement that it has with the city, all right, by its terms. I don't know how that outcome would, what the outcome would be, but when you're talking about literally hundreds of thousands of dollars, possibly millions, people don't walk away, corporate America doesn't walk away from that generally without a fight. So it's a great theory you have, but it's not been tried, it's not been true. And so you have to be careful in making those kinds of comments as to what our intentions might be in terms of legal action.
Attorney Horvath, I'd like to agree with the statement you made. Hold on, let me finish. I want to talk, let me, let me talk. I've been sitting here, I got a sore throat, I didn't want to talk, got a fever, I'm sorry, but I needed to be here. I'm going to say what I have to say. You made a point, without a fight. We have a deadline till October 22nd, that possibilities are still on the table. We gave a commitment as a city when this started. We sat right here bipartisan, saying we're going to go to the end, we're going to fight this to the end. The end is not here yet. The end is October 22nd, not right now. We have a lot of time. They want to negotiate with us later, let us negotiate with us later after that deadline passes. We owe it to the community, we owe it to the 800-and-so employees, we owe it to the businesses that rely on 30% or more of traffic from that hospital. We owe it to everybody to fight for this hospital and not Metro South or Quorum Health. But if another person was available to come in, we have till October 22nd to come in.
I agree.
All right? And I want to invite, Montana Welsh is here, and if Mr. Horvath is violating Open Meetings Act by not allowing somebody, we want to bring him to executive session, all right? I want to have him come here, and I asked him to look into something. As my legislative counsel, I want him to come here. Also with Juan, please stay up here. And did you, were you able to look into something? Please step up, because we're not giving up without a fight. At least me, as Fred Bellato, Second Ward Alderman, and I think other people, these people on this council, all right? Think we have a lot of time. We have till October 22nd still. Why give up right now?
I agree.
All right? I want to invite the council to finally talk, which we wanted him to talk in executive session. The attorney didn't want us to go in executive session, all right? Carrie Horvath, the Olis and the Stirk. So we're talking in open session, which, hope you guys paid attention. I asked for this, so let's talk in open session. All right? Now, I want, I want my attorney, okay? Please, I want him to talk.
Don't blame me for not going into executive session. You sat there and arrogantly said, let's talk about it here.
Exactly, let's still talk about it.
We talked about here, Alderman. So please, don't blame me for doing exactly what you asked to do.
Thank you, attorney, thank you, thank you.
Along with the consent...
Thank you, please drink some more water. You've been talking long enough tonight. Please, attorney.
So briefly, if I can take it down. I have no doubt Mr. Morado is trying to do what he thinks, he believes is in the best interest of the city and the community. Alderman Bellato reached out to me yesterday after receipt of the representative's letter and asked me to reach out to find out what exactly was going on. After speaking with Representative Rita's office...
Please go to the mic, please.
His office directed me to reach out to Third Horizon Strategies. My understanding, and I'm going to defer to you on a lot of the technicalities, I'm not a healthcare-based attorney. But there is a potential purchaser that is being represented by Third Horizon Strategies to acquire the hospital. I don't, I don't have a lot of details, so after talking with Alderman Bellato, we were going to suggest maybe that Attorney Morado reach out to Third Horizon and get more details on the situation there. Because at least from what Alderman Bellato told me, his main goal, money aside, is to ensure that the hospital is there for the future. So again, you know, with the, you know, you spoke of a temporary suspension. It may or may not be granted. Again, from my client's standpoint, their goal is to do whatever it takes to make sure it stays open. Yes, you know, as a, as a last-ditch result, you know, taking money, that has to be done, okay? But they want to make sure every action is being taken to keep this open. So there is a lead with Third Horizon Strategies. My understanding is they have reached out to Quorum. And Alderman Bellato, correct me if I'm wrong, you're asking, you told me to ask Attorney Morado to reach out to Third Horizon Strategies and discuss the matter and report back to council.
I guess I want to make sure that everyone else is also aware of the timeline and how the process would play out in the event that you find somebody who's coming, wants to come in and purchase the property. So a certificate of exemption on the, one that goes through the process very quickly, we're talking about the application being put together, submitted to the board, all the way to issuance of a license. Well, let's just start with the application. That can take anywhere from two to three months. That's for a certificate of exemption. A certificate of need can take you anywhere from four to six months. Licensor of a hospital requires you to have all of the requisite staff in the facility, and then you have to pass. So you have to meet all of the standards set out by CMS, by the Department of Public Health. That process has been known to take, if you are working it quickly, it can take one to two months. But I just want to give you the timeframe realistically of what would happen at this point, especially given the fact that the hospital is not currently operating. But if it is the determination of the council that you would like me to reach out, I'd be happy to. And we're here representing the City of Blue Island.
Absolutely, absolutely.
What I don't understand is how would proceeding with the current negotiation with Quorum, would it interfere with the process of also talking to a financial banker?
I don't think that we should go forward with that until we look into this third, what is it, third?
A third, Third Horizons, right.
When did Third Horizon, let me ask you this. When did Third Horizon come into the picture?
I wouldn't know, I was...
How did you get that information? Who gave it to you?
Via phone call to Representative Rita's office.
Okay, when was that?
Yesterday.
So between yesterday and today, just so we understand one another, Mr. Welsh knows my phone number, he knows how to contact me. He has contacted me on a number of occasions to discuss matters which come under...
Again, we're getting into petty, petty issues. I want to bring a fact. 10 years ago, the sitting mayor worked with our state representative, congressman of different parties, and we didn't bicker like this. We want a hospital.
I agree.
We want a hospital. Who cares if he called you, didn't call you? It's not about feelings, it's about a hospital.
Unfortunately, there's a lot of Aldermen here more interested in money than the health of the residents of Blue Island.
That's what it is, though. It sounds like you want about money and not the hospital.
It was you who made the comment. You know what? Let's look into the Libby's building. Maybe there's a, went to the city, take that building over and...
That's been exhausted by 20, 30, 40 years. We have a timeline still that this could be saved, all right?
All I'm asking is...
Your negligence of that kind of comment shows the ignorance of what you're saying. Libby's been empty 50 years.
I don't think anyone's advocating to turn down a deal or whatever. All that's being requested is that a phone call be made before this decision is taken.
Can't we call a special city council meeting and get...
I mean, if they want to negotiate, go ahead, if that's what the council wants. But again, time is of the essence.
Why are you pushing this deal?
Again, I think emotions is getting in the way of what's at the city. No one is saying turn down the deal. No one is saying, all we're saying is make a phone call to make sure we have all the facts before decisions are made.
Well, we're not, I guess, my point here is, I guess, certainly make a deal if we can. We all want the hospital, there's no question about it. But why don't you put your suspenders and your bill out? I mean, why not have this deal? What is the problem with developing both simultaneously so that we're ready for whatever happens?
So again, without having the specifics, and that's why I would ask that you reach out, is that the deal with the city that Quorum has is disincentivizing any third-party agreements.
We don't have a deal with Quorum.
The proposed.
Yeah, we don't have it.
The proposed.
Right.
I wonder where that information came from, that it... I am sorry, but I've been working on this for the months that it has taken place since they announced in July. And to hear a comment like that based on nothing other than a call from State Representative Rita that what we're doing disincentivizes a third party, and there's nothing that it's based on, because we already know, council doesn't know. I'm not telling you to sign the agreement. I'm not telling you to go forward with the agreement. We brought Mr. Morado in here to explain to you all of the things that are good and all of the bad things that could happen, all right? But, and I don't want to see the hospital closed any more than anyone else, but the fact of the matter is, as we sit here tonight, that hospital is closed. The second fact is, we went out and tried to get something accomplished. So with that being said, I've never heard of this Third Horizon Strategies. We will try to reach out to them. But to tell us it disincentivizes on the basis of nothing, open your eyes, council, pay attention.
Hold on. It's not on the basis of nothing. That was shared with me. I am not saying, don't do the deal. I'm not saying, I understand the logic behind the deal. It sounds right. My client wants to do everything he can to make sure the hospital stays open as a hospital. So all that was being requested is that Mr. Morado reach out to this individual at Third Horizon Strategies and see if there's substance to it. If there's substance to it, to share it with the council. If there's not, well then, the deal is there.
Can we have a meeting next week?
And this can be done quickly.
And for the record...
The phone call last night telling us about this could have opened the door, so we could have contacted Mr. Morado today. He could have reached out before the meeting tonight. And we would have all been fully apprised of whether this...
Mr. Horvath, I did. Mr. Horvath, I already spoke to Mr. Morado this morning.
But there was no, there were no facts in that letter other than, I'm working out a deal, but I can't tell you about it. So all I'm saying is, there's a way to present information, and it wasn't presented.
Talking about manners.
Mr. Horvath, I contacted Mr. Morado this morning and informed him of it, okay? I returned your call just as you returned mine, okay? Just as you returned my calls.
So can we meet next week then?
Again, this is not, there's no advocating here to turn down the deal that was negotiated. All, all that I'm saying on behalf of Alderman Bellato is to put a pause so that Mr. Morado can make the phone call, and let's call a special council meeting after he's had the phone call.
I agree.
I agree.
I still, I don't understand the pause part.
Well, I don't understand why we got to, we want to keep pushing, pushing, pushing.
Next week.
It's like we're letting Quorum off the hook for $2 million.
I mean, this week, I mean... Two hours is fine, you know.
We want other hospital facilities.
Can't we still, if we meet next week, it's still before the 22nd deadline?
Yeah, it could be a different week.
As I said earlier, we're not here to ask you to authorize the agreement.
It seems...
I asked Mr. Morado, you, we told you at the last meeting that we would bring council in. We brought Mr. Morado in to bring you up to speed on what has taken place, to answer questions you may have, and to explain as best he could what the status of the situation is. No one's trying to get you to sign an agreement, and so don't try that, Lloyd. What we're trying to do is keep you advised. We would have done it happily in a closed session. We're doing it publicly, which may be beneficial, because maybe the public needs to know where things are at. So we've accomplished that. We never asked you to authorize this agreement. And so that shouldn't be the takeaway from this particular presentation by Mr. Morado and the discussion we've had. I'm sure he will try to reach out to whomever he may contact at Third Horizons to see if there is merit to this and what the circumstances are. I'm certain he will let us know. And then we will let you know whether it's worth your while to have a special meeting or not.
Thank you. Could I just maybe get one final point of clarification from Mr. Morado, whose presentation I really appreciate it? Is any delay in the process of working with Quorum on this potential deal putting that deal in jeopardy? That's what I want to know.
I have, we have not communicated directly with Quorum since the end of the September 17th board meeting. All right, so I tell you that just this morning, I was, I think I was reading in the Tribune or Stoughton, that they say the deal is very much still on the table, that we're willing to do it with the city if they want to move forward. So delaying, I think that's, I don't know that it hurts. And I guess to Attorney Horvath's point, I'm not sure he's asking you to approve it this evening. But yeah, I mean, the deal, it is what it is. I think at this point, if anything, the council may want to consider any kind of changes or anything else they want to do to do. I think it's pretty good what we worked out so far. But again, that's what this delayed process is for.
And to answer your question, I have been in contact with the representative from Quorum. And he has indicated that yes, Quorum still wants to go forward. There may be differences, as I tried to explain in our closed session last week. There may be differences based upon the costs, the legal costs that are being incurred, all right? But yes, they do want to go forward. What was in that article, that statement, apparently the author of the article contacted Quorum independently and obtained that quote, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Go ahead.
Let's have a question. Can I ask the fire chief a question?
Go ahead.
What would it cost us to upgrade our ambulances or buy new ambulances?
Buy new ambulances or upgrade ALS.
Either one, or both.
Buy a new ambulance is $150 to $200 times three. We wouldn't have to necessarily buy new ambulances, but we should be looking at ALS, and that's roughly equipment. Not including school, manpower, and everything else, $300,000 roughly right now if it sits. So if you want to go and make everybody ALS by sending the school covering their time and everything else, potentially it's $600, $700, somewhere thereabouts.
One last question, go ahead.
I'd like to ask, basically, maybe Mr. Morado, our attorney, is basically, from what you just said to me, basically about the redevelopment agreement, again, I'm only assuming that the hospital's closed, they have to submit paperwork every year for expenditures or whatever they need to get reimbursed from the TIF. If the hospital's closed, I'd like to have some more clarification on this redevelopment agreement, because to me, that would be very awkward to give money to somebody that's not even operating. That redevelopment is the continued redevelopment, so.
Well, I don't know the numbers off of the top of my head, so I'm not going to pretend to tell you. But the hospital presented original costs when Metro South first came in. Original costs for the total, they believe, were reimbursable. Those costs, if I'm not mistaken, are still being reimbursed. Mr. Miller would probably be able to give you a better understanding of what the balance is that they claimed were reimbursable costs and how much they've been paid to date, okay? I don't have that information, but Mark Miller probably would have that.
Attorney Horvath, I just think it might be important to add that if you, let's say you're able to do exactly what you're saying and get out of the agreement and take away the 8B, the agreement as it's currently drafted wouldn't prevent you from doing that. So it wouldn't prevent you from, if it's possible, it wouldn't prevent you from doing just that. So if you move forward with it, you get the $2 million transition fee that we talked about. You can, if you can do what you would like to do, you could do that, and then you still get the money that way as well.
In the agreement, the proposal that you guys did, it did say we would maintain the current structure to the end of 2020.
For the six months. I believe it was till the beginning of 2020.
Yes.
Right.
Just want to clarify.
Thank you very much. I'll do a motion to recommitting the regular session.
Of course, yes, it is a regular session.
All right, then I need a motion for adjournment. We're not doing the last session.
Thank you. Just to be clear, I'm contacting the third...
You're contacting Three Horizons.
Okay. Okay.
I need a motion for adjournment, motion by Alderman Fairwell. Can I just ask, should we set a date for a special meeting?
Until we get information. Need a motion by Alderman Fairwell, second by Alderman Casadesus, is that okay? To adjournment?
Are we adjourned?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.